We have the police signs on it.
People watch this and talk about us, we don't have long. Call this regular city council meeting to order at 6:00. Stand by for education. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to meet as a group and discuss the concerns.
This conference will now be recorded.
For the Hondo, we ask that you bless this council and this meeting and all the citizens of Hondo as we continue to fight the virus. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ and Savior. Amen. Thanks, Danny.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a form of the council plan all under the president. I have them fast, citizens comments. I believe the city manager has a couple of them to read.
Yes, sir. One of them is from Deborah Lee, and she is from Medina County. Ms. Lee states that she is okay with the restaurants, except you take small mom and pop stores like those in the town of Hondo, you take 75% of their business away, and they do not have any business because they do not have a lot of seats, such as Hondo Cafe and Luigi's. She is also asking to consider opening the nail salon, hair salon, and barber shops. If a hair salon has four stations, then only one station will be open to provide the services. She recognizes that her stylists patrons are 50% elderly and cannot do their own hair. She believes the city can make exceptions. I encourage the city council to open the hair salons, nail, and the barber shops. Release the restrictions on different places like restaurants. We have to understand that we live in a rural town where there are small businesses that cannot afford to lose 75% of their businesses. If the mayor can do something, that would be great. We are not the same as San Antonio, we are Medina County, Hondo. Second one is from Cheval Lopez. My name is Cheval Lopez, I live at 1002 Avenue S here in Hondo. I am a Hondo City Council candidate for place four in the November 3, 2020 general election. I'm concerned about how many working people lost their jobs due to COVID-19 here in the city of Hondo. Does the city have that data? Is the city receiving any federal funds to help working families that lost their jobs with assistance to help them pay for utilities and rent or mortgage payments during this coronavirus pandemic like other cities in Texas, like San Antonio are doing? Also, what is the racial and gender breakdown of the residents that have gotten infected and died from coronavirus here in Hondo, Texas? I am in favor of a city ordinance making wearing a mask mandatory in the city of Hondo. Not doing so is irresponsible and will only help spread coronavirus since the majority of the residents have not been tested and do not know if we are carriers without any symptoms. Also, I want to know where is the city of Hondo's plan to fix our streets? The city adopted the 2019-2020 budget in September 2019 and approved $1 million to fix our streets and alleys. We also hired robotics last year to assess all of our streets, have an idea which of our streets were in worst condition and determine which streets would be fixed this fiscal year. We are already going into our eighth month of our fiscal year, and no streets have been fixed yet. In addition, the animal shelter needs to take down the plywood around the shelter to let air into the kennels, it is starting to get hot.
Is that it?
That's all I have, sir.
All right, moving to item number six, discuss and consider approving the minutes in the city council meeting of March 19, 2020. Emergency call, special meeting in April 27, 2020. Emergency call, special meeting. In front of you, there is a correction to the minutes of the 16th. The citizen's comments area was left, not in that set of minutes, who will need to be added to the minutes. Do we have any other additions or corrections to those minutes?
No, sir.
Will that be approved?
Second.
Motion, and second to have them approved. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same signs, motion carried. Moving to item seven. City manager reports. Start with the water report.
Go ahead, Chair.
Hello, councilman and mayor. I have the water report forecast for you, sorry about that, might be a little hard to hear me. Start here, the city of Hondo possesses an allotment of 2,645.919 acre feet of unrestricted water. The report that we're going to be giving you calculates the usage estimates based on the previous year's actual usage and 8% above and below the actual usage of the previous year. We also have 180 acre feet that the airport can lease the city in case of an emergency. As far as the report for January through March of 2020. For the first quarter of 2020, the San Antonio pool experienced no stage restrictions. The city of Hondo pumped 418.021 acre feet. For a decrease of 40.78 acre feet, or 13,288,000. Well, I guess I could have moved it on. Where was I? 288,203 gallons from 2019. It says on here there's a difference of 9.75%. That is not correct, I'm not sure how that got slipped through here. If you turn to A2, on the supporting numbers below the chart, you will see that it's actually supposed to be 8.89%.
What is it?
8.89.
8.89?
Yes, you'll see it on the percent difference on that breakdown there. Like I said, I'm not sure how that got transposed there, this shouldn't have been 9.75%, but we are still doing very good. As far as the forecast for April through December of 2020, the Public Works Department projects the San Antonio pool will be entering stage one restrictions from August 2020 to November 2020. Projections show following the 2019 trend, we may not enter stage two or five restrictions. The city retains sufficient water rights to meet the projected band. And it's the beginning of the year, so as it progresses, we'll be able to do a little bit better with the forecast. It's just a little early right now.
Right now, your forecast is pretty much based on last year.
Yes, sir.
Good, that's good. Questions, council?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Send Diane.
Second quarter financial report, D coming in?
Yes. Speak into the mic and loud, the mouse, you too.
Evening, Mayor, Council. The package that you have in front of you is, will reflect the activity for the six-month period ending March 31, 2020. The general fund, if you will look down on, in the table, the fund balance is increasing. The fund balance has $1,025,97. As of March 31, the city had collected 94% of the property tax that we budgeted for the year. Expenses are still well within budget amounts for all of the general fund. Bond and sinking fund, this fund will basically remain as it is expense-wise because we don't have another bond payment until August 1st. So at the end of July is when you will see a change in that fund. Electric fund. The received and the cost of services to electric customers is what this fund is made up of. Both revenues and expenditures are under budget thus far. The water and wastewater fund, the charts that you see, the, has pulled out the TWDB fund revenues and expenditure so that you have a better overview of what the fund is actually doing. And there have been a few large capital purchases during this quarter. So that has kind of dipped into some of the fund balance, but it will even out over the year. Sanitation fund. The revenues are over budget by 13,000 and expenses are 127,000 less than what is budgeted. Economic development. The EDC has collected 84% of sales tax in this fund, and we expect the EDC to hit the budget with no issues. The pages behind it are how we got our numbers. Anybody have any questions that they'd like me to go over on any of these funds?
First of all, your expenditures on your water and your electric include the payment in lieu of taxes, right?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you?
Yes, they do include, we do make a payment in lieu of taxes quarterly. But what you see and why the expenditures are higher is because the way that the program works is normally expenses are divided equally amongst in code over 12 months, and these are the capital expenditures, like the vehicles and equipment, were all bought in a one lump sum, and so it will show, and that's what D meant by equaling out later into the year.
Another question I had, in your EDC, you don't give a fund balance. You do give a fund balance, but that's not, that's not the fund balance. Fund balance is nearly $2 million, not 180.
The majority of the EDC funds are going to be indicated on your investment report.
Right, and that will be later.
This is cash on hand.
Well, the others aren't cash on hand.
They're CDs. The EDC, most of their money is tied up in the CDs.
Yes, sir, we have that cash on hand.
Why don't we have a fund balance being correct?
That's how the numbers came up, is a fund balance, let me see if I can find EDC. It's 39,739.
That's the difference between where we're at at the year. The annual budget is 485,000 and revenue 332,414. For our fund balance, a 152,586. This 39,739 is how we're doing at this portion of the year. It shows that we're positive in the revenue by 39,789. And again, this doesn't reflect the CDs, that will be in the investment report.
I know that, but I'll talk to you later about it, that doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question, just in the general fund. So we're 900,000 plus over budget. Where's that attributed to?
Well, I guess because we've got 94%, and that is just at this point. So our revenues are more than our expenses as, at this point in the year. So I know, so.
So what do you normally budget then for your, your collection of the taxes?
We budget it very conservatively, but we've, we've budgeted for property taxes in the general fund, 1,282,406.
I think the question you're asking, Ann Michelle, goes back to the same thing that I said to the mayor. Revenues are allotted and in code the same way, so even though the property tax usually comes within the course of four months, it's allocated over the course of 12. So it shows you that your revenues at this point in the snapshot in time are higher than what is budgeted for being six months into the year. So because we collect all the property tax at one time, or kind of at one time, it doesn't spread it through the 12 months, what you'll see over time is also leveling out. But additionally, our sales tax this year has already almost hit budget, and we're only halfway through the year.
The revenue.
On revenues? Yes, sir. Yes, on revenues.
Looking at the sheet in the back, it does show the fund balance there. So what that is, the revenue over expenses, does anything do with the fund balance over?
At the first column, you're right, that's the difference.
So that's misnamed names when you talk of the fund balance, that's just the amount this year over the.
For.
That's not the fund balance.
The fund balance is in the first column. That is for the budget in the first column, the year-to-date actual is the third column. If you're looking at the page where all the numbers came from.
Yeah, that's correct, you got a fund balance there, but, but over here, when you look at those other pages, that's not the fund balance, that's the over, this year of income over expenses.
That's the way it is on all of, all of the accounts.
What's missed moment, then?
I think it's because of the way, the, the last column is the delta, and I think just because of the way the chart prints, it's telling you that you're, like for instance, on bond and sinking, as D said, we've taken in the revenue because of the property tax, but the payments are later in the year. So it's showing you at this point, year-to-date actual, that you're higher in revenue than you are expenditures, simply because of the time of year calculating. So even though that last column says fund balance, all three of those are not the fund balance. One of them is the annual budget, one of them is the year-to-date budget, fund balance, one of them is the actual year-to-date budget, and then the last one is just the delta between actual and budget.
Hate to be argumentative, but y'all ought to just drop those last two lines on the fund balance. On the sheets, because it's not the fund balance.
Okay. That would be a change to the report, this is the same report we've been giving you, but happy to do that.
Maybe you're being old and all, I didn't notice it before. Any other questions about the financial report?
No, sir.
Okay, move ahead.
You want to send Chief in?
Yes.
So I'm going to go ahead and give an update on COVID-19. Today, Governor Abbott held a press conference at 2:30 and announced that he will be letting his order expire for the stay-at-home on April 30. He also announced that on Friday, he will be letting retail businesses open at 25% capacity. So we will be meeting tomorrow as a collective group with our emergency management team, the mayor, and discussing his 64-page report on opening Texas and how that impacts Hondo and moving forward from this point. We have not changed any city operations, and that will be part of our discussion tomorrow, is how we go about reopening city operations and at what time we will be doing that. The next item is update on Keeping God's Country Working Stimulus Relief Program. Just wanted to update council that we did our first review as a committee last week to remind everyone, this is the sales tax dollars that the EDC has allocated for small businesses here in Hondo. We reviewed 30-plus applications. A number of those were funded last week to the tune of about $72,000. There were some that they went back and asked for additional information that will be reconsidered this Thursday, and that's 11, and we have 15 new applications already. So at noon on Wednesday, we'll be cutting off this application cycle for this week, and we'll be sending those out to the review group. As you might recall, the EDC allocated $300,000 for this program, so we're almost a third of the way there. We still have marketing dollars, we only had $200, I think, approved for marketing, and we've not had any requests regarding the hot funds. Any questions?
How many, how many applicants did you say we had? 32?
We had.
35.
35 last week, and the number of them were funded. Two unfortunately didn't qualify because they were not within city limits, didn't meet grant criteria. And then a few more, we had 11 that were reprocessed for this week, plus an additional 15. So we've had 50 applications between the last two weeks as of today, and funded about $72,000 worth of requests.
Okay, Kim, but what he asked, the 72,000 that's already been funded, how many applicants were those?
So.
Sir?
Yeah, it was about 20.
20, and we had 15 left?
We had 15 new applications, 11 that we're reconsidering this week because we went back and asked for additional information. So we have 26 this week, and again, two of the original 35 did not meet the qualifications for the loan.
So maybe more than that, because there'll be some come in today and tomorrow, too.
Yes.
So we may have nearly 40 to reconsider, look at on, on Thursday.
Mayor, I wanted to bring something up that I'm, I guess I'm not in agreement with. I wasn't at, I missed one of the meetings, and, you know, one of, one of the stipulations or one of the requirements that we had was that it could not be a home-based business. And I feel bad because there's folks out there, probably a handful of, of people that work out of the office, that their office is located at their home. I know for a fact there's got to be probably three or four, or maybe even a handful of these contractors that, I mean, they don't need an office. They have, they've been in construction for a lot of years. They spend millions of dollars at our local lumber company. They use fuel and whatever, and yet we're, we're running them off, or saying they don't qualify. I would like for the, the EDC and the city to reconsider. Because I think that we need to try to help those folks also. We have individuals that, full-time, they are committed to do landscaping. Those guys got caught off also because they don't, they don't need an office to store their equipment. So we're telling them that they don't qualify for help, and I, I don't believe that's right. I think those, those are the small people that we need to try to help. And for some reason, that was included in one of the requirements, and I'm not in agreement with that. I would like for us to reconsider and, and look at this again. You know, it's, it's just not right, I don't think. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Somewhat to blame to myself and maybe the city manager, because we talked about it, and we didn't think about those contractors, we couldn't think of any real home-based businesses, didn't think about the guys that do the yards either, so that's why I'm sticking on.
But we did discuss it prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
In regards to what actually, that actually meant. And am I correct by saying that those people are included?
So if it's somebody who is similar to what Eric says, that they have a staff, the home-based businesses that was reflected and that was discussed at the EDC and at prior to the meeting were people like the ones who sell Avon out of their home, the ones who sell Tupperware out of their home, the ones that sell Cincy out of their home. So it isn't necessarily your construction workers or your landscaping and those things. It's the general, you know, things that are not, they're thought of to be, I guess, a supplemental business versus a full-time business. And we may be able to make that distinction on the application.
Yeah, I think the application is a little confusing because it, I think it states that it, they require frontage, frontage access, or, am I correct?
It may say that they have to have storefrontage in town, or something like that.
I think we could talk to the task force on Thursday, and like you said, get interpretation. Because I agree with Councilment Torres that guys like, that have a full-time lawn business, I mean, they, they don't have an office, but they're home-based, but yet they have employees, and some of them have employees and all that.
A lot of the requirements are, you know, to be registered with the state, you know, and then the comptroller's office as well.
Yes.
And then, you know, also give your sole, you know, if you're a sole proprietor or LLC, they have to give that information as well.
Yes, and so I think just, I'm not even sure you need an interpretation because I would say that those types of things are not necessarily home-based businesses. You're not shipping packages out of your home, you're out in the community providing a service. So I think that the subcommittee is smart enough to make that distinction between what a home-based business is meant to be versus what Councilment Torres is referring to.
Well, obviously, we have some people out there that don't feel like they qualify because they got a home-based business and they do that kind of work.
Is there someone that they can reach out to, to?
Yes, if anybody has questions about the application, we have provided Genevieve Flores' contact information on the application. If anyone has any questions, they can call and ask and say, hey, do I qualify, or what do I need to do to fill out this form? Because a lot of those businesses are going to be registered, where if somebody's selling Tupperware, they're not going to register as a business, that's a home-based business. Versus somebody who's providing a lawn care service is probably registered with the Secretary of State, pays some type of sales tax, has some type of record with the state comptroller's office. And as long as we can verify that information, I think that it's something that would be considered for the grant program.
Good. Yeah, because I would, I'm, I'm not talking about the people that do it after they got a, they leave their primary job, I'm talking about the people that do this as their sole income.
Right, no, I understand exactly what you're talking about.
There's only a handful that I could think of, but I would, I, I would like to see us revamp that or look at it again, see what we can come up with, because.
I, I, I.
If any of y'all get inquiries like that, then it needs to be reported to Ms. Davis or something, so we know who those people are.
We can refer them again, refer them directly to Genevieve because she has the applications available readily, and she'll be able to answer those questions. And again, we can have this conversation Thursday with the task force to redefine home-based business. Because again, somebody who's out selling, you know, some of those products, and nothing against anybody who sells Tupperware or Cincy or any of that, just for the record, anybody who sells those kind of products typically isn't going to be a registered business with the Secretary of State.
I understand, and I agree. I, and, and from, from day one, and I, I even called you that morning, we spoke that morning because we did need a point of contact, because I, I don't think that any of us here, other than the mayor and John, would be in the position to answer anything. My, my deal would be to recommend them to Genevieve, like you say. Let them, let them ask all the questions they want, you know, reference to the application or qualifications, whatever.
Right, and I think that's exactly the way it is.
Yeah.
Kim, Kim, out of these applications that we already have, is there anybody that fits into that category that you know of, or?
No, that, like, as I said, the two applications that did not qualify were because they're not in the city limits.
Those are the only two disqualifications we've had, the ones that are out of the city limits.
Yes.
I think you need to brief Genevieve on this conversation.
Genevieve is listening to this conversation right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I agree with Eric, can that be, could we look at?
Because we do have, we do have a few people that have their own construction companies here, and as long as they can prove that they have their tax ID or their unemployment identification number, I think we'll take a look at their applications.
Will do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, move on to item E, Texas Municipal Clerk's Achievement of Excellence Award.
So this is one of the things that I think I really enjoy most about my job is getting to celebrate the accomplishments of our team. And I received a letter on April 13, 2020, that states, this is from the Texas Municipal Clerks Association. Municipal clerks are often known as city secretaries, so this pertains to Miguel and Elsa. Says this letter is to inform you that of 595 member cities, the office of the municipal clerk in the city of Hondo is one of 18 to receive the inaugural Texas Municipal Clerk's Achievement of Excellence Award. The program recognizes the statutory requirements and demands for the effective management of resources for proper government by the municipal clerk's office. The award itself recognizes municipal clerk offices throughout the state for compliance with federal, state, and local statutes that govern standards necessary to fulfill the duties and responsibilities of the office. A municipal clerk office must have met and demonstrated nine of the 12 standards to be eligible to receive the award. The 12 standards considered by a committee of your municipal clerk's peers include records management, professional development and certifications, government transparency, elections, awards and recognitions, Public Information Act, Open Meetings Act, boards and commissions, municipal clerk office policies and procedures, other areas of responsibility, innovation and streamlining projects, and established departmental training. The recipients of this distinguished award will be announced in the July issue of the Texas Municipal Clerk Association, Inc. newsletter, and will be officially recognized in October at the awards banquet held during our annual graduate institute in Corpus Christi. So this is a huge accomplishment for Miguel and Elsa, they completed the application, I signed off on it. And again, it's important to understand that they're one of 18, or the city of Hondo is one of 18 cities that are municipal. one of 18 cities that our municipal clerk's office has been recognized.
Congratulations. Good individual.
Great job. Thank you all.
Bethan Bleach, your city manager report?
Yes, sir.
Please move on to item eight, proclamation. My pleasure again to recognize a group that is instrumental to the welfare of the city of Hondo and our city, our local department and other law enforcement officials. So, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas National Police and Law Enforcement Week in the United States and in Hondo will be observed May the 10th through the May 16th this year, and all of us, and thank all of our communities' law enforcement officers who work tirelessly in protecting our citizens. Whereas our Hondo police and law enforcement officers enforce our laws and keep our neighborhoods, schools, and families safe as they report to duty each and every day, aware of the sacrifices that they may be called upon to make in risking their lives in order to protect the public and enforce the laws of this state and your city. And whereas especially during this present time of dealing with coronavirus pandemic, our law enforcement officers, along with the other local first responders, are on the front line in not only keeping our citizens aware of the health safeguards, but also in having to enforce all the current state, county, and city declarations passed in an attempt to safeguard all of us. And whereas celebrating this week also gives our citizen's street the opportunity to honor all law enforcement officers nationwide who have given their lives during their line of duty, and also to thank all the law enforcement families who also sacrificed in having their officers serving and protecting our communities. So, now, therefore, I, James W. Downer, Senior Mayor of the city of Hondo, you hereby proclaim May the 10th through May 16th, 2020, as National Police and Law Enforcement Week in our city, and urge all our citizens to honor our officers who does, who do such a great job in our community, not only protecting our rights and freedom, but also recently in contributing so much in our fight against the coronavirus pandemic, sign this date. So, do you want a picture taken?
Yes, please.
report, D. Willman, again.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor and Council. As you can see on this second quarter investment report, there are two in our CD pool that have zeros out beside them or just a blank. That is because those two are only, have the interest added annually. The rest of them are quarterly, and the, this quarter, we had $13,009,0450. 63.72, 2% of that belongs to the EDC. 16.853% is general fund. 19.151% is perpetual care fund, and then the unclaimed funds is the other 0.274%. Are there any questions?
The 2.8 is what we're averaging? Is that what?
Well, yes, but they are dropping as, as they are coming and maturing. We were at 2.35% for a lot of months, and now, all of a sudden, as they are coming mature, they're dropping. I think one of them is down to 0.350. So, right now, those that are, are still not coming due or not maturing are still at a pretty good percentage, but as they do mature, they are going to drop, just to be aware.
And that's where the contract reads, as they mature?
Yes, sir.
There's no fixed rate throughout the contract?
I don't believe so, no, sir.
I guess it's a floating rate towards an option. Questions of Ms. Willman on the investment report?
No, sir.
Now, I'm open to a motion.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Before the discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes, and she carries. Thank you, Ms. Willman. Still not there, huh? I'm gonna break my neck trying to get up. Item number 10, discuss and consider ordinance number 1224-04-20, and ordinance granting CenterPoint Energy Resources Corp., EVA CenterPoint Energy Texas Gas Operations, the right of privilege and franchise for a period of 20 years, plus excessive five-year extended terms to construct, install, extend, remove, replace, abandon, operate, and maintain its facilities within the public rights way of the city for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of natural gas, establishing standards of service, providing for the payment of our, of 4% of the gross receipts from the sale of gas within Hondo, Texas, providing for acceptance, providing a severability clause containing other provisions relating to the foregoing subject, and repealing all ordinance in conflict and conflict. Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Council, the mayor. As, as you may remember, the April 13th council meeting, we presented a workshop on some of the options that made sense going forward with the franchise renewal for CenterPoint. And what we're here tonight for is to see what course of action you want to approve on that. The three options were to leave it as is at 2% and roll into the five-year rollovers, go to 4% and retain original jurisdiction in rate making, or move to 5% and cede only the original jurisdiction, which still gives you the right to intervene as you see fit. They just don't file the actual rate case directly with the city.
Well, you did a pretty good report on this one last meeting, I guess.
Yes.
And I think we discussed the two options. It seemed like the consensus was to go with the 4% and maintain our jurisdiction. That's pretty much the only change. But you also gave us a report which I thought was very good as to what future income we're gonna make off this contract, which compared to what we're making right now is substantial.
Yes, sir.
And that's a big move for us. I suppose all the council read, read that report, and so I'm open for a motion to approve this ordinance.
Some moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where's that comparison you're talking about on this last sheet? On the back sheet. One question I have, it doesn't have anything to do with this particular ordinance, but, you know, they, they were doing a lot of construction here in town of lines. Are they through with that yet?
They're through with that particular project, but they usually have something on the books. In the South Texas region, they're investing $37 million in system improvements currently.
That project's been going on for a couple of years, and one concern I always had was whether to go back, when they, we got through, they'd go back and make proper repairs of the streets and all that, and I'm curious if that was done.
I'm presuming they have. That is part of the franchise ordinances, that they will restore it to original condition.
So, Mayor, I think I can answer that. I have, may have a little more information than Mr. Baker. The way they handle this is they typically hire the crews to go out and do all of the construction part first, and then they hire one contractor at a later date to go back to all the different cities and repair the alleys and streets. My understanding is that's the phase of the project that they're in now. I do believe that the majority of them in Hondo have been repaired, but we still get calls now and again that say, hey, they were in my area recently and still haven't repaired. So, we do follow up with CenterPoint. Again, this particular franchise agreement now also reminds them that they do have to put the streets and alleyways back into better condition than they found them.
I know Michael Smith was, was bird dogging this pretty well, so I assume he knows where we're at and...
Yes, sir, absolutely. He continues to bird dog them pretty well.
Mayor, in relation to this issue, with us retaining original jurisdiction, does that mean that we will go through the charade each spring of delaying the increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, we wouldn't, right?
Correct, yeah.
We already voted.
Okay, we'll move on then. Discuss and consider approving Highway 90 photo cards for the 2020 Hondo ISD graduating seniors. Chris Gonzalez is supposed to present that.
The city of Hondo was approached by a Hondo ISD staff member and parent requesting to place photo cards on Highway 90 as a recognition initiative for the 2020 Hondo ISD graduating seniors. The goal of this is to recognize this year's senior class, who will not be able to walk at their graduation ceremony with the current COVID-19 situation. There are approximately 150 seniors that would be representative on the parkway. Excuse my typo, it is photo cards are going to be 24 by 36 inches, 2 by 3 feet, 10-millimeter coreplast signs that would be placed May 9th through June 9th, which is the prescribed window in our sign ordinance. With the given size and number of seniors, all photo cards can be placed between Avenue E and Avenue K, each spaced approximately six feet apart. After reviewing the proposal, staff determined some guidelines are necessary to ensure safe and effective placement of these photo cards, including ensuring compliance with the emergency declaration measures of banning gatherings of over 10 people, applying the curfew measure, and maintaining social distancing efforts to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Additionally, guidelines for placement include acceptable material and scheduling of when parents are allowed to install photo cards along with when they must be removed. Within the packet that you have in front of you, there were a couple of attachments. The first is gonna be the guidelines that were recommended for this particular project. Some we've already gone over as far as the size and the material. Others include directions on how to be installed on the highway. A lot of the guidelines that we used were similar to what the chamber uses for their Christmas cards, so we did take you back off of those. It does outline the timeframe of when they can put them up and when they must be removed by, along with the requirements for using only adults on the highway with the proximity of Highway 90, of course, for safety precautions, and as well as requiring a scheduling of when parents would be allowed to put up these signs. The next couple of pages are just examples of how the sign would be set up on Highway 90, along with a picture of an example of the photo and the material that we are requiring for this particular project.
I thought that we only had 10 feet of city property before you read Rollo's property.
There is so many feet. The parkway is city property or, but it's leased through Union Pacific?
I can't understand you.
Can't understand.
So, there's property, the property is city property, except it belongs to Union Pacific. We lease it through Union Pacific. So, this would be just like the parkway cards. There's not any difference. We went through the requirements for the parkway cards that we do at Christmas, and basically outlined the same program for this group.
But I thought that, you know, it goes way back to when we done other work on the, on the parkway, that, that we could only stay within 10 feet of the curb without asking permission from the railroad to use anything past that 10 feet.
It's not outlined in the lease that way. We do have a conversation with Union Pacific on another issue tomorrow, I'm happy to ask them then. But again, that is not something we do in the process with the parkway cards, that it, we actually went through the sign ordinance and made sure this was in compliance with the sign ordinance, and because this was kind of a, no pun intended, novel situation because of coronavirus, we were looking at whether or not council would be willing to extend this to the seniors as something to recognize their accomplishments since they haven't been able to have prom, they haven't been able to have a lot of the things that most seniors do. And this was the parents' way of recognizing, or the school, some of the staff members' way of recognizing those seniors. So, I'm not, I don't think, Mayor, that there's any requirement that would preclude us from doing this, other than council.
I don't wanna ask the railroad, but you might check that sometime.
Well, tech, tech's not so okay, right?
Yes, because it's actually Union Pacific right of way.
Well, I'm glad they're doing something. This is a great idea. I know that Uvalde is also doing that as well. You know, and I, I know that there's a lot of kids out there also that can't afford the cost, so, you know, I, I strongly encourage anybody that can sponsor a, a senior to do so.
I'd just like to comment about Mrs. San Miguel. I think she's the one that's really behind this, right? And I think, isn't she a counselor?
Correct, Mayor, she's a counselor.
I'd say that she's a very compassionate lady. I've had received several emails from her wanting to know how people can get involved in helping feed some families that are needed, and this, that, and the other. And of course, this project, she's a very community compassionate person, and I think that we all need to recognize her.
Definitely. Included in your packet is actually a letter from her. The other person to recognize is Frank Navarro. He has actually also been working on this project. The two of them took ownership of it, and when they came to city staff, we said we'd be happy to work with them. But just like with the Christmas parkway cards, this is something that would have to be done by them and not necessarily the city, and they're so enthusiastic, they said that would not be an issue.
No lighting involved?
No, sir.
Well, thank y'all for the work that y'all put in to making this happen.
Of course.
We do need a motion to approve...
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve this photo card project. Any further discussions? Most in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, yes, carried. Thank you, ma'am. Item number 12, discuss and consider appointments to God's Country Economic Recovery Task Force, COBD-19. Put this on the agenda because last week, we were giving some thought of where we would go after things started turning as far as the peak of, of positive Corona victims, and I know a lot of cities are developing committees to help them restart the economy here. Add in mind to appoint probably an eight or nine committee with at least two from the health field, school board, small business and large business and all that to comprise this committee. However, as of today, and we'll be talking about that in the next item, the governor did come up with a complete new ballgame for us, and it looks to me like, and we'll discuss this under the declaration, it looks to me like he's starting up the economy by himself. So, we're not gonna have much to say so on when and where. So, for the time being, I don't think it's necessary to go forward on task force, but I wanted y'all to know what we were thinking, and maybe we will need to, we just have to see. But that was my point, and, and having this on the agenda, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Wouldn't it be, but I guess just to... Have it already set up, Mayor, in case we do need it?
Well, I hate to appoint a group of citizens that did not have anything for them to do, and that, and that's one thing you could do tonight if you wish. You could give me the authority to go ahead and appoint a committee. I don't wanna divulge the names right now, because I don't want to be out in the public unless we, we go ahead and do the appointments. But that would be my concept of the people who would be on it. The health people especially would tell us when the right time is. And of course, we need their input from the small business people and the large business. I was thinking about HEB managers, people like that. So, that's the only thing you could do tonight if you wish, and then I'll have the tool if we need it.
Well, I think we need to leave it alone for now, Mayor. You know, we got the government, they got all kinds of people that are specialists, and they ought to know what they're doing, and that. And number two is, if any, if we're gonna make any kind of board, I mean, I think we're in right here. And I think we, once, once the governor says which direction he wants to go or plans to go, I think you have a good board that, that's sitting here right now, other than the health. And if we prepare ourselves, we could take opinions from... And if we prepare ourselves, we could take opinions from, like you said, somebody about the health issues and so forth and so on. But...
Well, that was my main...
Yeah, I would think that we need to leave it alone for now.
I agree.
Well, I think the proper people, the governor has a task force of doctors and data that he's relying on and passing that information down. I think that's what we need to follow.
That's probably true. I just don't disagree with the fact that he's reopening a lot of the economy right now because I don't think we are ready. But that's his power. It's just my personal opinion.
I agree, Mayor.
All right. No, taking any action on that, just information only. 13, discuss and consider taking action on the sixth memorial declaration of local state disaster due to the public health emergency. As I mentioned, the governor came up with a 64-page manual today on the phases to reopen the economy statewide, which of course affected us and our authority to do whatever we want to do in Hondo. The bottom line, I think, is what he's done is he's taken the authority away, except for any decisions that we want to make on the reopening of any of our own government facilities. And also, we still would have the right, if we wanted to, to enforce the mask thing and as pertains to the restaurants and all. But that's already in the declaration. So my plan is, with Mr. Davis's help, is to get Frank Garza to take a look at our present declaration. We'll have to redo it to accommodate what the governor's doing and all that and that. But then we'll have another meeting to adopt a new declaration that covers, implements what he's doing versus what we can do here in the city.
Would that most likely be a called meeting?
It would be a called meeting, but we won't wait for two weeks.
Right.
It'll either be a special meeting or a special emergency meeting, one or the other.
So as of Thursday, he, his orders end, his stay-at-home orders, and he's opening up libraries, correct? And so what facilities would we even be looking at open? Like our library, our golf course, obviously not the rec center, but what...
I would recommend...
State libraries.
Right.
He still said it was up to the local governments as to what they did with their own libraries.
Right. But I'm just saying follow suit with what he's doing. So what facilities would we have? We have a library...
The library, the rec center, the golf course, what else?
City Hall.
City Hall, yeah, city hall, things like that.
Public Works.
What we do with our own people, which actually has been under management anyway.
So my recommendation is, because he also said that with museums and libraries, he didn't recommend making sections available that are hands-on.
Right.
I don't know how you make a library not be hands-on because people are going to touch books when they're inside, or they're going to touch computers. And we have a very hands-on library. So we would need to reassess. My recommendation to the council is to, since this came out just before this meeting, is to let, we put a review committee together that's been working on making the recommendations to council. And we're meeting tomorrow at 1:30 to read. We've all been assigned this homework tonight to read through his 64-page document and then make a recommendation to council about how we phase back in opening our businesses or our offices to business. And if we want to do it Friday, along with everybody else, because I don't know what 25% of capacity at city hall would look like, or we wait until the two weeks when he reopens 50%, should the numbers be where he needs them or where he wants them to be throughout the state. So I'd like a little time to review what he's recommending in his plan and then make a recommendation to council as to where we go from here with respect to what we open with respect to city facilities. Because again, as he said in his presentation today, with respect to sports, you can't participate in sports and have more than four people. So even with golf or tennis, you can't have more than four people, and you still have to practice social distancing and those requirements. So the rec center, and he also talked about summer camps and a plan to open summer camps. They don't have that plan yet. And a lot of what the rec center would be doing this time of year is preparing for summer camps and opening registration for the summer camp. So we're having to kind of go along with, as he rolls this out. And so we'd like a little time to familiarize ourselves with the 64-page document and then make a recommendation to council as things further develop regarding how we go about opening up the city facilities.
We still can have Frank Garza redo the executive...
Absolutely. He's going to have to do that.
To kind of follow what management's recommendations are going to be pertaining to our own facilities.
Yes, sir.
So, so right now, Kim, the only, the only authority or any change we could make would be city-owned facilities? Is that all I'm understanding?
The way I understood the conversations that we had today, and we do have Jesse on the phone if need be, there are certain things that the city has no authority to do. We cannot continue with the stay-at-home order after April 30. The stay-at-home order expires April 30. We cannot prohibit the reopening of businesses that want to reopen at 25% capacity. But they have to follow the guidelines that are outlined in the document from the governor, which is called Open Texas, the governor's report, the 64 pages. There's a whole section on restaurants. So to give you some examples of what restaurants would have to do to reopen, they have to have someone open and close the door for all the customers. They have to have hand sanitizer stations available to the customers. They have to have disposable menus available to the customers. They can't seat parties more than six people. They have to have only 25% of capacity, which means they're going to have to find their certificate of occupancy, which every building should have, and only allow 25% of that capacity within that facility. So that's just the tip of the iceberg for some of the things that the restaurants have to do to be able to reopen. So we have no control over that. All of that is mandated by the governor's office. Additionally, we cannot mandate the mandatory use of masks or facial coverings. That has to be a recommendation only. It's not enforceable by fine, is my understanding. So we're going to have to get clarification regarding the restaurants and whether or not we can mandate that restaurant staff use masks when serving or preparing for, well, of course, for preparing.
I think it does stated in here, if I read correctly, Kim, that they want the employees to do wear masks.
Okay. So there's things that we're going to have to go through in this report. We will have to talk to the attorney to get direction regarding the curfew. Does the council in the seventh decree want to continue the daytime curfew for our youth? So those are all things that we're going to need to look at and come back and make a recommendation to council. So we do have a meeting, like I said, tomorrow about putting together a plan based on this lengthy document, and then our recommendations of staff knowing from our 3 o'clock conference calls with the public health and the county judge and everyone every other day.
Well, so, no, exactly. I mean, when this stay-at-home order ends, why would we have an effect for her curfew?
I don't think the curfew is enforceable after the stay-at-home order.
Okay.
I do think the curfew might be enforceable.
I think that's very important for us to get...
Then we need to...
We need to get interpretation from our attorney.
Agree.
Okay, the governor's order ends on the 30th. Ours currently goes to May 22. What parts of ours is continuing and what parts can we continue? We need to be very clear about all of that.
Agree.
Well, we can just put it in here tonight to end it when his ends, our curfew ends.
We are going to have to vote on a new declaration, and we don't have a declaration tonight until we do the study that she's talking about. So we're going to have to have another meeting to have the, a new declaration agreed upon.
I think, I think like Kim said, the only thing that we can enforce is what we keep open that belongs to the city.
We got it.
Any other place.
Available?
But all the, all the businesses need to understand what policy is, what procedures and policy they need to follow in this manual that the governor put out. It's not, it's not just a matter of, okay, I'm going to go open my restaurant and I'm going to have people come in there like they normally do. And that's not the case.
Additionally, not meaning to interrupt you, but I do think it's important to reemphasize that hair salons, nail salons, beauty salons, tattoo parlors, massage parlors, and bars, barber shops are not allowed to open still.
Correct.
And that's by decree of the governor.
That's phase two, right? That's phase two?
It might be phase two.
May 18.
It could potentially be phase two. He said today in his conference that it could potentially be in phase two. It all depends on the data.
And in terms of rural counties with five or fewer, that is not us.
Correct.
Nineteen.
I think it's very important for our citizens, I know they're overwhelmed with keeping up with all of this, but it's very important for them too, especially as it affects their business and their activities to know what the governor and its own line.
One thing that's fixing to happen, and even in Medina County, I think, what, this week sometime, they're going to have a special testing site in Medina County, by appointment only. And I didn't get where that's going to be with you.
They're not officially announcing yet, Mayor. And it will be by appointment only with symptoms.
But I remember where they said they'd be set up anyway. There's going to be a whole lot of new testing going on statewide, even in Medina County. That could result in a lot more posters, which would affect what he does on the 18th.
That was one of the things that I was going to talk about today, but I think the governor kind of, is going to kind of shut me up about everything that I wanted to talk about, is that there, we don't know, being that we don't have the testing, then we don't know how many people are out there that are carrying the virus because there are no testing. As of last time we had the meeting, there was 15 coronaviruses in Medina County. And on the Fridays, there was 18, and 18 and 19 came up. I don't know how many, if any more have come up since then.
19 today.
Okay? And then it states that the 19th and 18th coronavirus cases were community spread. Okay, what does that mean, community spread? That means these people are out somewhere in the county that got the virus from somebody that probably doesn't even know they're carrying the virus.
That's right.
And, and, and I know that the governor has more power than I do, but I, I still don't agree with everything he said, but what can we do?
Oh, fine.
There's, there's nothing we can do. And I, I still think that a lot of the people here in Hondo need to realize that this isn't a laughing matter. Whether the governor said, we can, we're going to do this in phase one and then do this on phase two, we still need to be protected of ourselves and try to do the best we can because as one of, I did a lot of research over the weekend. And as of, a lot of studies have been done, the only way we're going to prevent this from spreading is the distancing and the wearing of masks. And, and, and I'm sorry that, that we can't push that anymore and make it mandatory. It's going to be left to the individuals to try to wear a mask as much as they can. So we can't stop this pandemic from spreading any further than what it has.
I agree.
Mayor, before we move on, another thing that I think we should emphasize that the governor said today was individuals who are 65 and older are a disproportionate part of the population that's subject to catching the virus. And he is encouraging 65 and older to continue to stay home, and also those with underlying health conditions. And he said if they have to go out, he does encourage them. I think his words were strongly recommend that they wear a mask or facial protection.
I think we need to do what we can in our declaration as far as masks. I know it's probably not enforceable, but I think we need to have a heavy recommend in our declaration that the people wear the mask when they leave home. Anyway.
Well, you know, it's, all this is putting a burden on the city and the police department. I know we, all during the weekend, we have problems on, on employees, other retail businesses and restaurants that employees weren't wearing masks. And now with this book publicized by the governor, it's going to make it even tougher for our police force to get the people to comply with what the governor is asking us to do. So all that said, I just hope this pandemic doesn't get any further than what it has.
Well, we will keep you informed as to when we're ready to present a new declaration to you. Could be Friday, might be a good day since that's the day everything starts over. All right, moving on to 14, the agenda's completed except for executive session. And I understand you do have executive session items tonight. So we're going to executive session at 7:06. And who stays?
Genevieve, you can stop.